Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council Meeting. We appreciate having all of you here. As we always do, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation. Please join me in standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, we have Pastor Mick Huntley, Midlands Bible Baptist Church on Chandler Road East. Pastor, if you would, please.
Let's ask God's blessing upon this time. That's great. Father, we do just want to come to you this evening, Lord. We thank you that we can come to you and ask for wisdom. And Lord, we do pray that your wisdom would rest upon this meeting this evening, Lord. I thank you for each of our officials here, Lord. And thank you for our mayor, Lord, and all those who are decisions of leadership within our city. I ask, Lord, that you'd just give wisdom, Lord, if you make decisions about what's going to take place in our city, Lord.
And also pray, Lord, that you would just help us, Father, if there's contested decisions, Lord, to talk through those decisions, Father, in a graceful way. And we do ask for your wisdom and your guidance, Father. Lord, we do pray for our mayor, Lord. We thank you for his place. And we ask that you be with him, Father, and encourage him, give him wisdom. Lord, we thank you for all of our city officials, Lord. We pray the same for them. And certainly, we do want to thank you for our first responders, Lord, our policemen, firemen, Lord, and other first responders. Lord, we thank you for their place in our city. Pray your protection upon them, Lord, as they go into dangerous situations all the time. Father, we pray that you'd just be with them and protect them, and thank you for their place. And certainly, Lord, we just do pray and ask your wisdom, particularly in this time, Lord, with the virus, Father. And we do pray for the virus, Lord. We know that you can take it away. And Father, we pray that, if that be your will, that you would, Father. And Lord, we pray that for all those who are affected by it, Lord, that you'd give grace and comfort and peace, and help us as we make decisions, Lord, about the virus, Lord. And we do pray, Father, just again, for our country. And pray, Father, that you'd be honored and glorified in the decisions that we make as a country. And, Lord, we just thank you for, again, for this meeting tonight. We ask your wisdom and your hand upon it. And we ask all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. We appreciate your words, and the mayor does especially. Let me just comment to you and to the public that the mayor did have surgery on an eye, and he is recovering well. The surgery went well, and he said it was okay to inform the public of that. And so, all prayers, all good wishes, he welcomes. That's why he's not here tonight, and why I am conducting the meeting. With that, then, I would please ask Susan if she would call the roll.
Mr. Stinson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
Ms. Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, council. And the next item is, the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the room, as it always is. It is a guiding principle. They call it the Sunshine Law, because it allows the public to have input and access, and gives guidance in how they can do that. So, it is posted clearly. The next item, five, is approve the agenda, consent agenda, claims, and advisory committee reports. I'll take a motion. Councilman Shannon?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Shannon to approve the agenda, second by Councilman Cook. Any discussion? Then I'll call for the vote. Susan, if you would, please. And my computer seems to be on, but I don't have a vote. Now I do.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Then, the next item is approve the consent agenda, all of the items of which are on that are marked with an asterisk. Does any council member have anything they wish to remove? Seeing none, then I'll ask for a motion to approve. Councilman Cook?
Thank you. I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have the motion by Councilman Cook, second by Councilwoman Welch. Any discussion? Councilman Shannon?
Thank you. It's come to my attention that there's something the public needs to be made aware of here. We are no longer advertising our legal notices in the Bellevue Leader. So, we need to make sure the public knows where to look for our legal notices and things like that. So, apparently, we are using a website called the Omaha Daily Record, and they have launched a page specifically for the city of Bellevue's legal notices. But our legal notices are no longer published in the Bellevue Leader. So, anyone looking to know what's going on in Bellevue needs to pay attention to this Omaha Daily Record and the City of Bellevue tab on that website. So, I thought that was important to make sure that the public is aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Shannon. And I would just add that all newspapers are struggling, and that the Bellevue Leader is still printing a paper, an E-paper, but their editor was terminated. Their office in Bellevue is no longer active. So, Bellevue and the rest of the country is losing newspapers. So, it was not something that necessarily we wanted to do. With that, we have a motion, again, by Councilman Cook, and a second by Councilwoman Welch. Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Then, we will move on to number... Six was the approval of claims, seven, a special presentation. And we're pleased, tonight, we have a presentation of Officer of the First Quarter, Officer of the Second Quarter, Officer of the Third Quarter, and the Fourth Quarter, and the Officer of the Year from last year. And our Bellevue Police Chief Tom Dargy is here to do that presentation, I believe. Chief?
Thank you. Members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to go ahead and, I guess, brag a little bit about some of our officers from the year of 2019. I would have preferred to have done this kind of earlier in the year, but situation didn't allow us to do that, so we're kind of a little late to do that. But I'd like Mr. Preister, if you could come down, Mr. Ristow, and I have some certificates. And I'm just going to bring each officer up individually, and just say a few words bottom and present the certificate. So, if you could help, I'd appreciate that. So, a little bit about our officers and kind of how they're selected. We have at the department, it's called an Excellence in Law Enforcement Committee, and that committee is made up of peer members. So, the command staff, sergeant, lieutenant, nobody has any input. So, it's truly developed by the peers for their peers. And they do a fantastic job of going through. And sometimes, it's a super difficult decision, because there's a lot of good stuff that our officers do in there. And so, they go through, they recognize officers that they feel have gone basically above and beyond. And it's broken into four three-month quarters, with an officer of each one of those being selected. And at the end of the year, the group gets back again, and then they select an Officer of the Year, which may or may not be an Officer of the Quarter, but most of the time it is. And so, with that, I'm going to go through the order. And the first one I'd like to call up is Detective Cassandra Ward. She's been an officer with Bellevue since April of 2011. She's been and worked in the operations, which is the road patrol. She's been a field training officer, and right now, she's a detective in the Special Victims Unit. During her time with us, she's received five-plus commendations. And specifically, why she was recognized in 2019 is she worked a homicide case, which was very involved, a lot of moving parts, various suspects and witnesses. She worked over thirty hours of overtime on this case. The first twenty-four hours in a homicide are really crucial. That's when we can get kind of the most work done. And like I said, she worked over thirty hours of overtime to do that. And because of that, she arrested three suspects for first-degree murder and was able to put them in jail. So, with that, she was recognized for Officer of the First Quarter. Yep, perfect. A second officer I'd like to call up is Officer Sean Jimmerson. He has been with the department since April of 2011. He's basically an operations officer, so works patrol, FTO. And he received the honorable mention for Officer of the Quarter in the Fourth Quarter back in 2016. And he's received five commendations and also has a Life Saving Award back in 2017. I think that was, Grabsman is jumping off a bridge, right? So, he's done some fantastic work since he's been there. He is being recognized in 2019 for the Second Quarter, where he took a stolen vehicle report in the north part of the city. He noticed a trend, kind of worked that, did some great police work that led into, actually led into Omaha, and worked with Omaha Police Department, set up some surveillance. And he was able to arrest a party for the theft who was involved with five stolen vehicles. And for his work in that, he received Officer of the Second Quarter in 2019. Good job. Officer of the Third Quarter, I'd like to call up Officer Molly Wertz. Officer Wertz is a newer officer. She just started January of 2019. Already, she's received two commendations. She was recognized in 2019. She took a theft report from a local business, and based on that theft report, was able to develop some suspects who have basically worked around the metro area, stealing numerous, numerous items from businesses. And in kind of a weird twist, she was driving around in Council Bluffs and actually saw the suspect. So, she called the police department there in Council Bluffs, and they were able to go ahead and make an arrest on that. And by doing that, a habitual criminal was taken off the streets, and she cleared up six warrants with that. So, for that, she was Officer of the Third Quarter. Next up is Officer Jamie Murray. Officer Murray's been with us since August of 2008 as the operations officer we're now, he works now. Since he's been here, he's received over twenty commendations, with one resulting in him receiving the Life Saving Award for incident in 2009. In 2013, he was awarded the Certificate of Merit by the chief. He's received honorable mention for Officer of the Quarter in the Fourth Quarter of 2015, Officer of the Quarter in the First Quarter of 2019. And he's being recognized, he noticed a problem in his area with combined drugs and some stolen vehicles. He, on his own, began working surveillance, working the area, noticing coming and going of different vehicles, kept track of all of that. And aggressively, he began making some traffic stops, and as a result of his work, recovered four stolen vehicles, and he's made multiple felony, felony and misdemeanor drug arrests. And so, for that, he was recognized as Officer of the Third Quarter. And then, as I stated earlier, that leads to the last award, which is Officer of the Year. And the Officer of the Year was presented to Detective Cassandra Ward for that outstanding work that she did on that homicide investigation. And just a little bit about her, she basically applies that same work ethic to all of her cases. She works in the Special Victims Unit, which is a tough unit to work in. They deal with some of the most vulnerable in our society, and it's quite often very difficult to do that. There's, quite frankly, not a lot of officers that want to do that due to the sense of the nature of the work. But she does a fantastic job in that unit, and very pleased to announce she's Officer of the Year for us in 2019.
We could do it right here, or just right where they're standing. That's fine, too.
That's perfect.
Yeah, so, let's keep a little bit of distance here. You guys want to get in there? Tom, can you scoot over a little bit? That's where Cassandra could be, this way, a little bit, so I don't get the podium in there. You could just go over here if you could, and then, Doc, can you go over there? Okay, thank you.
Thank you to Chief Dargy. Thank you to all of the officers who were just recognized this evening. Very nice service that we appreciate, and to all of our first responders, all of our police officers, firefighters, and even Public Works folks that are out there on the front lines. We do appreciate you. We thank you for your service. We are a grateful city for your service, and a better one at that. And speaking of which, in order to do those things, it takes money. And the next item on the agenda is 7B, and that's the budget presentation from our Finance Director, Rich Severson. I would ask Mr. Severson if he would...
I think he's going to do that after the first reading.
After, oh, that's right. This is just the first reading, so he's going to sit tight.
He was going to do it after you read it on the first reading, unless you want him to do it now.
I got to turn my page. Okay, I'm a little, not only is the mayor rusty, hike, but I'm rusty tonight here. So, we will go with the reading of the ordinance. So, Susan, if you would, please read the ordinance.
Just go to item eight. Yeah, just go to item eight, right here.
Organizational matters.
They put it weird on the agenda. Just do eight.
Okay. We have item number eight. We will move on to organizational matters, and we will have the budget at the next council meeting when we will go over it. But the public is at least aware of it now. Then, no organizational matters. Item nine, approve citizen communication. None of the citizens have given us any. Ten is liquor license, no applications, so we'll move over to eleven. Eleven is ordinances for adoption, third reading. And I would ask Susan if you would read this ordinance, please.
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Combs Road and Canyon Road. More particularly described in Section One of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, Susan. I would entertain a motion from any council member. Councilwoman Welch?
I'll make a motion that we approve 11A. Ordinance Number Four is... I'll second it.
And we have the motion by Councilwoman Welch, and a second by Councilman Cook. Is there any discussion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you. I just want to make a quick comment. I'm going to support this. Sherwood Properties, Sherwood Homes is a premier builder in the Bellevue, Omaha metropolitan area. And my feeling is this, there can be three homes built down there today, and they wouldn't even have to come here in front of this council. They've realigned the lots, and they're going to make it down to three lots to build three homes. And I truly believe having one development, one developer putting these three homes, and as far as the grading, I know water runoff is an issue, but I think having one developer putting these homes in, doing the grading, so they can, my father graded for many, many years, and I was by his side, is very critical, grading. And I think having a developer do that for all three properties and trying to get the water moved in a good direction, so there's less concerns maybe further down the road, is the best way to do it. If these are sold individually and three different people build, they're going to worry about their property, how they want to move water, how they want to address it. And the bottom line is, is there's laws and rules in place as far as water runoff that they have to meet. We run into this with every developer, no matter where they develop, that they have to meet certain requirements before they can develop and as they develop. And one of the critical ones, as far as, is what type of water will run off their property. So, I think Sherwood Homes is an outstanding builder in the Omaha-Bellevue area, and I think they'll do a good job, and I'm going to support this. Thank you.
Councilman Shannon?
As I said last time this was discussed, the developer and the development are not the problem. The city needs to address this area, and the city needs to come up with a long-term plan for addressing this area. So, the proposal that we're discussing tonight is the new development, and the new development does not cause a problem. It contributes to the solution to the problem. But there is still a problem, and the city needs to address it. So, parsing the issue, I'm going to support the development and encourage the city to address the problem in the area.
Councilman Stinson?
My concern is the water runoff. The only storm drains on that area are at the bottom of Canyon Road. Combs Road, all it is is a ditch on each side. There's already erosion starting. So, by putting in a pavement driveway up to that middle house that's going to be there, that's just going to allow that runoff to come down and create more erosion along that road, plus put the water right into that bottom property. Because I looked for storm drains on Combs Road, got out, walked through that area. I could not find any storm drains at all on Combs. There is on Canyon, but they're right at the bottom, and they're not going to do any good for the, for that property that's right at the bottom of that hill. So, with that reason, I'm not going to support this.
Councilman Burns?
Yeah, actually, I really want Tammy to come up to the podium. So, I met with the president of the Hidden Hills Homeowners Association, and we walked Canyon and Combs. She and I and another neighbor, and was it the last Saturday, I think? I don't remember. It rained. So, and I got a chance to also see where some of that water kind of does runoff. And so, I talked to Tammy about this earlier, and was just wondering, so, I think it's Canyon with the two drains. I kind of wanted to get this answered. So, where does that water go to once it drains off? And then, you know, there are a couple of other issues with Combs. So, it is gravel road. And when we walked it, it was in good condition, but a lot of times, it's not, and I've driven it in the past. And it can get really bad in, on the, I think that would, I don't know my directions. So, on the opposite side of the home, where are we? I don't know where we're at. So, this is east, going down Combs, and then so north on that side of it, I know there's sort of a ditch. It looks like some of the water just kind of sits and doesn't actually run through. And then, some of that water actually runs across the road, over to the property, and then down the side of that. And then, it continues on, and there's sort of, it looks like the city had kind of put some, sort of like where the water would go and continue on. And so, I just wanted to know, I know we had talked about this, and maybe you can address some of those concerns and talk about, you know, some plans and maybe some of those discussions in regards to that.
Sure. So, there is storm sewer in the area. When the water does run, I believe most of the water is going to run along that ditch or along Combs Road. Dean Dunn is here this evening. He has done some basic calks from a drainage perspective and an engineering standpoint, and he can probably speak to those. That might help. I'll go ahead and let him speak to that engineering specifically.
Thank you, Tammy.
So, right now, there's a storm pipe that runs along the south edge of Combs Road. It's been extended a little every couple of years by the street department, as requested by the adjacent property owners. Right now, it outlets, I think it's three or four hundred feet to the east of the intersection of Canyon and Combs Road. To my knowledge, there's a flared-end section slightly to the west of the intersection that picks up the majority of the drainage. that picks up the majority of the drainage. Any overflow would then cross over the intersection and run alongside the road to the ditch. The ditch then goes around Combs Road, past Jewel Park, and continues south, and eventually makes its way to the river. Street Department has been unable in recent years to do their normal maintenance on some of the ditch along that area, primarily due to other demands, due to some of the extreme weather situations that we've had. But in talking to them this afternoon, they said that they're a couple weeks away from getting in there and doing some actual ditch maintenance, some reshaping of the ditches, adding dirt where needed, and adding riprap as needed.
And then, as far as ditch maintenance and maintenance to that road, what will it look like in the future? So even it being a couple weeks out, so that road is, well, it's gravel, so I mean... And I know erosion happens, and so what will it look like long-term as far as maintenance goes to that road? Cause also, it looks like it could affect this property eventually, you know, getting up to it. And also as you go down that road, and on the, I think it'd be the south side of that road too. You know, there's some homes up there as well, and I know it all looks flat, but I mean, a lot of, when you're walking down it on the south side, there's a lot of erosion, and it looks like things have really shifted down there. So what does long-term maintenance look like? Can you speak to that a little bit, and what really, I suppose, our plan is? Cause I think also the general concern is, is yes, there's water runoff, there's, these homes are gonna be built, and there's already runoff, will there be more runoff produced, and it affecting this area directly?
As far as the addition of the three homes, based on the drainage area contributing to the runoff along Combs, we're looking at a little over twenty-five acres that's contributing to it. The three homes that are proposed aren't gonna contribute significantly to the runoff. And that's ignoring any stormwater requirements. Current stormwater requirements require that you can't have the post-construction runoff exceed the pre-development conditions. So even without that, there's not gonna be a significant increase in water. As far as long-term maintenance, there's currently nothing in place in the CIP or One and Six to pave that road. So our maintenance would end up being that of grading it and adding rock as necessary. And that's probably more complaint-driven than anything else. Or if our street department gets through that area, and if they noticed an impassable situation, they would schedule maintenance over there.
So is it, is there, and maybe I don't know for certain the reason that it's not concreted, whether it's asphalt, and is it more costly to continuously add asphalt rather than concreting it? And would that be a sort of a more long-term solution to this issue?
It's more of a matter of priorities, as far as the asphalt. If they put asphalt millings down, that's, we get the millings every year from our overlay project. So the material is there, and then it's just city manpower that puts it down. If we go out and purchase rock, then of course there's the expense of that. So it's, just depends on which solution we're after. To actually put a paved road in there, that is gonna be rather costly. I haven't estimated it out, but it's gonna be a lot more expensive than the short-term maintenance. And it's something that's possible, it just needs to be noted as a priority, if that's something that we all find necessary to do.
And would that help some of the, maybe alleviate some of that erosion that occurs down there? Especially with like water runoff?
Well, you're still gonna have the same runoff, and it's gonna eventually be piped down the same path. So it goes to that ditch along Combs Road. So I think there's bigger issues further downstream that I think the long-term plan should be to do some improvements along the whole drainage way.
Could you repeat that one more time, you said the long-term plan should be?
Should be to address the drainage going along the whole drainage way along Combs Road in the ditch. Whether that means going back to the master plan for Jewel Park, and creating kind of a wetlands detention pond down there. That's for administration and the council to decide if that is to be a priority.
Okay, so, thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I do have...
Councilwoman Welch?
Do, if it's about that, I have another issue that, so go ahead, you're fine.
Thank you. I just wanna say that Sherwood Homes has been in business for a long time. They have developed a lot of areas. They couldn't be in business to be here to develop this today if they didn't do a good job previously. They're very conscientious, they do a lot of building in Bellevue, development in Bellevue. Plus, this particular ordinance has hit the department heads. They've looked at it very conscientiously, looked at it from all different ways. They've heard what the homeowners association has said. They've all said, yes, this is the direction that we're gonna go. So based on their recommendation and the reputation of Sherwood, I'm gonna support this.
Councilman Burns, did you have something else?
Yeah, so separated from the water runoff issue, I just wanted Tammy to address some other things too. I just, so there's a neighbor on Bellevue Boulevard, and I know we kinda discussed this too. And I was just wondering if you'd speak to some of that as well. I believe it's Mr. Putts, and so he has a septic tank, I believe, which is located in Lot Two. And you know, a lot of his concern is, is that septic tank being connected to the city, and also the leach field, which I believe is where like, I just kind of learned a little bit about what that is. So if you could just speak to that a little bit, in, I know he had some concerns there.
Sure, so Mr. Putts has a septic tank that is not on his property. It was constructed off his property, on Mr., on Sherwood Homes' property. So that becomes an issue between neighbors, it becomes a civil matter. Just like, you know, if you have a structure, or you have infrastructure that's on somebody else's property, that would have to be worked out between neighbors. Mr. Westergaard is aware of it, the applicants engineer. There are a couple different ways to handle that, they are looking at that now. And they can work with Mr. Putts and, you know, find a solution. But there are a couple different ways to handle that. They could create an easement for the structure. They're also going to be bringing sewer in closer, so it'd be an option for him to also connect. So there's a couple different ways that that issue could be dealt with.
Okay, thank you so much, Tammy. And then I just wanna make a couple other comments, and I know this is really about the rezoning of this. And you know, we've talked about water runoff as a result of this, and so it's come up in discussion. And I just wanna, people to know, Dean Dunn mentioned, you know, talking about a water basin in Jewel Park where water runoff would go to, talking long-term and possibly concreting it. I know that we have had several talks on the City Parks Advisory Board about where that dog park is located, where all that water runoff goes to. I know that there's a lot of erosion problems within Jewel Park, you know, on Combs Road, and in this area in general. And so I just don't want anybody in that area to feel ignored or neglected, that things are being addressed. We are talking about that, and sort of, and we've talked about Jewel Park in this area heavily for like the last couple of months, figuring out how to move forward. So I just wanted to make those comments, and thanks.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, I just wanna make one comment. Last, at our last meeting, we had two ladies that spoke, Mary Ann Johnson, I believe that's who Mr. Burns met. Sunday morning, he did ask for me to go with him, and Sunday morning this did not work for me. But also the second lady that talked was a Ms. Carver, I personally do know her, and called her and had a good conversation with her, probably about thirty, forty minutes. So I just wanna let everybody know that the people that came here and spoke, Mr. Burns met, and I talked to the other lady, Mr. Burns met with the one lady, and I don't know, maybe she was, Mrs. Carver was with you that on Sunday. But I don't think we just forgot about it, and just waited to show up today to vote. We did at least make contact with these people, and at least talk things over, so, thank you.
Any other comments by any other council members? I would just conclude that I agree with each one of the council members, even on the different perspectives, and have been concerned about the drainage in the area for a long time. I have been in communication with both Ms. Palm and Mr. Dunn the last couple of weeks, getting lots of questions and lots of answers, and going back and forth, and have driven the area like other council members, so I'm familiar with it from before as well. Drainage is an issue, I'm very pleased that the street department and parks are looking at improving the drainage, that there is going to be some attention to the roads component of that, and that we are, with Mr. Councilman Burns, help with the parks advisory board going to be looking at the drainage and collecting more of that water in Jewel Park. It needs it, it's overdue, and I think we need to give that some priority. That's the bigger issue for the neighbors, that's the long-term drainage, this just raises the question. So as I look at the solutions and the promises, I'm hopeful that those promises will be kept. I too want to have the development, but not at the expense of the existing neighbors or the area. And at this point, I feel pretty confident that we're gonna have that. But confidence and vigilance remains, so I think our street department, our planning, our city workers need to continue as the development goes in, and even after, to make sure that we do what's right for the existing neighbors. And I will too be following up on that, and I have confidence we can get it done. If there is any other discussion, please come forward. Well, I'm sorry, we've already ended the public hearing last week, and we, unless somebody opened one up, we don't... I hear that we are calling for the question and taking the vote. So with that, I will ask Susan if you would please call the roll for the vote, or give the vote.
Is this for the, wait, are we calling a vote for a public hearing, or are we voting on it? I guess I was a little confused there for a second.
Sorry, this is the actual vote, I should've clarified that, on passage of the ordinance. The motion was by Welch, the second was by Cook, and that's on Ordinance Number Four-Zero-Zero-One, to request the rezoning of lots one through three. That's what this vote is, in Hidden Hills.
We had four yes votes and one no vote, with Mr. Stinson voting no.
About five and one.
How about that, yeah. It was five to one.
Okay, thank you, Susan, thank you, council. Then, we move on from that, it passes and is approved. Eleven, eleven A-one, the eleven-one is the approval of the preliminary plat for Hidden Hills, lots one through three, second edition. And on that, we would need a motion, Councilman Shannon?
I make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat for lots one through three, Hidden Hills, second edition.
I'll second it.
We have the motion by Councilman Shannon, and a second by Councilwoman Welch. Any discussion? Then Susan, if you would please, we'll take the vote.
We have five yes votes and one no vote, with Mr. Stinson voting no.
Thank you. Moving on then to eleven A-two, which is the final plat for lots one through three, Hidden Hills, second edition. The approval of that, we'll need a motion, Councilman Shannon?
I make a motion that we approve the final plat for lots one through three, Hidden Hills, second edition.
Second.
We have the motion by Councilman Shannon, and the second by Councilman Cook. Any discussion? Then we'll call for the vote on the final plat, Susan, if you would please, thank you.
Five yes votes, one no vote, with Mr. Stinson voting no.
All right, so we have passed the preliminary vote, the preliminary plat, and also now the final plat. Then, we have item eight B, excuse me, eleven B, Ordinance Number Four-O-O-two, an ordinance to amend Section Twenty-Five Point Five-Dash-One through Twenty-Five Point Five-Dash-Twenty-Five of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to city trees.
And just for clarification, that's Twenty-Nine Point Five-Dash-One through Twenty-Nine Point Five-Dash-Twenty-Five.
Ah, I stand corrected, thank you very much. I will, at this time then, entertain a motion to approve. Councilman Cook?
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance Number Four-Zero-Zero-Two.
Second.
We have the motion by Councilman Cook, and the second by Councilman Burns. And at this point, I would make a motion to amend, and I should've brought it. I didn't bring the motion, but the language of the motion would insert under the section where it points out that trees will be removed. Ah, there's my memo, thank you. The... I have a memo, but I don't see where I actually put the amendment. So basically, the amendment where it says we will remove trees would also include that we will replant a tree for each one we remove. And the value and purpose of that is, we have a lot of old parks that are continually losing trees, but we have not been keeping up in replacing them. Most of the replacements, and where we have done, has not even cost the city money. It's been done through grants that the Tree Board has done, and it has also been, oh, excuse me, I'm getting...
No, you're...
The rationale, because I don't have a second, and maybe my rationale doesn't matter much if I don't even have a second.
So the motion is to amend, to add a provision that includes for every tree removed... So the motion is to amend, to add a provision that includes for every tree removed, there will be a new one replanted?
It already says that there will be trees removed. So the amendment will be to replace each tree that's removed with one new tree. It does not have to be in the same park. It does not have to be in the same location. It does not have to be within a certain time. I'm intentionally leaving it very general. I'm not putting in how it's paid for, because I think we've used enough grants that we've got. At least eleven years of experience in doing that, and we've coordinated with the Parks Department in the plantings. And with volunteers doing the work. So I think it's to the city's benefit, if we look to the future. To make sure that we replace the trees that are continually falling and being replaced. I think it's wise stewardship.
I'll second it.
Okay, we, Councilwoman Welch?
I have a question with regards to that, and I have no problem with replanting trees when one comes down. I just um wonder if we can add some verbiage in there that says we will. Look at every outside opportunity to get it paid for before we come to the city. To ask them to pay to plant trees. Just, can we add some type of verbiage with that?
I can add to my motion that we assess all. Assess all funding sources to pay for them.
I I, yeah, I think that would be um just dutiful for us based on um the times that we're in at this moment.
And and with everyone's permission, I can work with legal counsel to make sure we get good, clear and legal wording in that.
So we're in the discussion phase right now of your amendment, so we have a suggestion. Let's get everybody else's suggestions before we make more amendments.
Councilman Shannon?
All right. I had some constituent concerns come in on this ordinance. So um. Help clarify for me what we're doing, where we're giving the city permission to go on to other people's property. Uh, there, there are some concerns about this, you know, or authorizing who to go on their property and what authority is this being done under?
I'll let legal counsel answer that, but I would just state that that component of it isn't changing. That's current law and has been for some time. It's modifying it slightly, but I'll let legal discuss that.
That's correct. It would be code enforcement who already has the legal authority to do that.
Okay, and does the city have a licensed arborist on staff?
Uh, we do not. I don't know, does the Tree Board have?
We do not have currently on staff, but the ordinance does require that a staff be either having it or in process of certification. And we have two on the Tree Board, and one of the requirements in the ordinance with the Tree Board. Is that a member of the Tree Board has to be certified as an arborist.
Okay, and who in the city is working toward that?
We have the ability to contract for the licensed arborist. So while we don't have one on staff, we have, we have the access to a licensed arborist. So if you have an issue, we can reach to an outside source.
Okay, and as far as anyone operating on trees in the area, they have to have an arborist license. Where is the grandfathering in that? If you've got a uh a tree company that's been doing it for fifty years and uh. We're now saying you have to have an arborist license. Is everyone grandfathered that's doing it today?
Nobody's grandfathered.
We didn't change any of that in this proposed ordinance.
That's existing ordinance.
That's existing.
That's correct. This is just talking about kind of the appeal process. If there is a code enforcement violation, kind of what happens? What's the next step? Um, and just kind of clarifying that procedure to be in line with other procedures, the involvement of the Tree Board, when do they come in? Um, how is that determined? So that's all this is really clarifying.
So it's authority to arrest the tree?
Or hug it.
Or hug it, yes.
Uh, most of the changes are not real substantive changes. They are, as legal counsel said, clarification of the existing ordinance. Removing some old and outdated language and updating it. Uh, the same process other than currently the Tree Board hears any appeals. And that puts volunteers in an awkward position. So the administration thought it's better. That the Tree Board is consulted, that they have the arborist assess, that they have all the information and do it. But that it actually goes to the administration, and if the appeal continues, it goes to the council. So I I think it clarifies well. I think it uh satisfies all the legal requirements. It satisfies code. They were involved. Uh, the Tree Board had some input. I think our legal counsel did an exceptional job, has been working on this for over six months. So. It's been a long time in process, and again, it was mainly clarification rather than real substantive changes. Most of what's in it has been in ordinance. Any other questions? Mr. Burns?
Councilman Preister, will you? Uh, say your amendment one more time. Is it? Yeah, I just, I forgot it. But was that just, if, and did you say in in parks? And was that specific to parks having to replant a tree?
Nope. The amendment from Councilman Preister was that for every tree that is removed under this ordinance, that a new one be planted. Um, he was intentionally leaving it kind of open-ended. Uh, that's the current amendment on the floor. And then there's a suggestion to add um. That that tree is funded by outside sources, if at all possible, prior to it being a city expense.
Okay, no, my only concern is, is I would, I'm I'm agreeable if it's for some reason in parks um. And then, you know, it becomes more of a city thing to beautify parks, um, because I don't want to see trees torn down. But for an individual homeowner, I think that it could be sort of a financial burden, because.
If I might, I appreciate your sensitivity, but this ordinance only really. Majority of it and in this section applies to city trees.
Okay.
Which would be the trees on public ground and would not impact the private residence or all of those trees.
No, it specifically addresses private residences and that they will be financially liable.
Yeah, so I I, this addresses if if I, if I'm in Bellevue and I have a tree and I'm cited by, cited by code enforcement and my tree on my property is removed. Um, I guess Councilman Burns' question is, am I then responsible for paying for and planting a tree back on my property? Um, so I think the amendment should probably be clarified. That for every tree that is removed under this ordinance, a new one is planted. And we need to fill in the blank on city parks, city property. Um, and then at the city expense, trying to get outside funding first prior to the city paying for it.
And and it doesn't have to be replaced at that location. It could be put. If, you know, if uh Councilman Preister has a tree that needs to be tore down. That when the new tree is planted, it could be planted in a city park somewhere or along a city roadway or something of that effect.
So I'm gonna offer a legal opinion. That this may not just need to be included in the ordinance. It could be something where the Tree Board's notified of the code violation anyways and are a part of that process. And then if they want to then. Gather the funds to plant a tree somewhere in city parks, they can do that. Um, I don't know if it necessarily has to be specified. And outlined as a shall happen in the ordinance. It could be something that just the Tree Board does upon notification.
Could it, could it be also that if the, if the tree has to come down, let's say on Mr. Preister's property? That the homeowner could say, hey, I'd be open to having another tree planted here. Wouldn't have to necessarily go on city property. Or are we making this thing way too complicated?
In my opinion, it's complicated.
I, it is starting to get complicated. It was not my intention to do so, and I was primarily looking at parks. So I would offer this suggestion. I will work with legal counsel and anyone who wants to have some input. In drafting it so that it applies to city trees, which was my intention, on city property. And we will get some wording and send it to you well before the next meeting. And then if we just carry this over till then, we should have time, and if there are any other questions come up, we can answer them. Does that sound agreeable?
So we can, so we can withdraw motions. I'll make a motion to table this until next meeting, when we can readdress some of the issues.
I will rem, make the motion to withdraw my motion and. Councilman Burns, would you withdraw your second?
Yes, I will withdraw my second on the amendment. And then.
Councilman Cook, do you, will you withdraw your motion on the main ordinance? And Councilman Burns, will you withdraw your motion on the main ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're at.
I've got a motion on the floor to table this till we can fix some of the writings and incorporate some things, and we'll bring it back next meeting.
We have a motion by Councilman Shannon and a second by Councilman Stinson to lay this over until the next meeting.
Discussion.
Any discussion? Councilman Shannon?
Uh, in the section on tree removal, twenty-nine dot five dash twenty-six. I'm giving you a second break. Okay, twenty-nine dot five dash twenty-six.
It's page eleven.
All right. In there, we're striking. If there's a dead tree that needs to be removed, that the city is, will notify people in writing that that needs to happen.
That's changed elsewhere in the ordinance, and it was redundant and. Um, it was redundant in this section.
So the process is going to be that it's a code enforcement violation. And then you're saying that's gonna go to the Tree Board, and that if a decision is made to remove it, there is gonna be a letter sent to the homeowner. To tell them before someone just shows up and takes their tree.
Absolutely, um.
Okay. Yeah, we.
Yeah, it's addressed in twenty-nine point five dash ten. Um, and then the original procedure for notice and abatement in twenty-nine da, or point five dash nine. So it's just kind of reworked into those sections, so that whole appellate process is kind of laid out. Um, it'll go to the Tree Board, and then ultimately they'll be notified in writing.
Okay.
Yeah, so that they will have all that notice requirement to get it done.
All right.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Is there any other question or concern? Now's a good time to bring it up, and we can address or work on it. Seeing none, then uh we have the motion. Motion to table it by Councilman Shannon and. Second was by Councilman Stinson. Thank you. Uh, any other discussion? Seeing none. Susan, would you please provide us the vote? And all we need is the computer to cooperate.
That's right.
Thank you.
All voted yes.
All right, ordinance number four zero zero two will be carried over to the next meeting. We then move on to item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading. There are none. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading. We have ordinance number four O O three, request to rezon the irregular Westerly seven. Twenty-four point six seven feet of tax lot eleven, except right of way. In the northwest quarter. Located in the northwest quarter of section fourteen, T one thirteen N. R thirteen E and the irregular tract in the northwest corner of tax lot twelve. Except right of way in the northwest quarter, located in the southwest quarter of section fourteen. One T, what, T thirteen north. Purpose of industrial develop for the purp.
There were a few um.
Purpose of industrial.
Councilman Preister, I'll read the agenda item with your permission.
Go ahead.
There were, sorry, it's very small print. I apologize. Ordinance number four zero zero three, request to rezon the irregular Westerly. Seven hundred and twenty-four point six seven feet of tax lot eleven, except right of way in the northwest quarter. Located in the northwest quarter of section fourteen, T thirteen N, R thirteen E. And the irregular tract in the northwest corner of tax lot twelve, except the right of way in the southwest quarter. Located in the southwest west quarter of section fourteen, T thirteen N. R thirteen E of the six P M Sarpy County, Nebraska. From A G to M L for the purpose of industrial development. Applicant Frank R. Kreitchi, general location Fort Crook Road South and Fairview Road, um, brought by the planning manager.
Thank you, and there it was correctly read, and I appreciate that. Uh, do we need Susan to also read the title? Susan, if you would, please?
Ordinance number four zero zero three, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska. As provided for by article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen. By changing the zone classify, classification of land located at or about Fort Crook Road and Fairview Road. More particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, Susan. This is the first reading, and this ordinance will be carried over to August. Eighteenth, twenty twenty at six P M for the second reading and the public hearing for anybody who may wish to come in. Thirteen B is ordinance number four zero zero four, request to rezon lots one through three. Block fifty-five, city of Bellevue, from B G M slash O T O. To R G dash fifty dash O T O. The applicant is the city of Bellevue. The general location is twenty-two twenty-one Main Street. And I would ask Susan if she would please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number four zero zero four. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen. By changing the zone classification of land located at or about twenty-two twenty-one Main Street. More particularly described, described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, Susan. This ordinance will then have its second reading and public hearing on August eighteenth, twenty twenty. At six P M, and anyone wishing to come in and testify is welcome at that time. Then we have item thirteen C, ordinance number four zero zero five, annual appropriations bill. And this will be by the finance director. We have resolution number twenty twenty dash thirty-five. A resolution to set the twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one property tax request. And there won't be any action at this meeting, but I would ask Susan if she would read the ordinance title?
Ordinance number four zero zero five, an ordinance to adopt the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriations bill. To appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities and to provide for an effective date.
Thank you, Susan. And now at this time, if we would have our finance director, Mr. Rich Severson, come forward to do some information. I was just getting ahead of myself earlier.
Okay. I've got a little slideshow to go along with the presentation. Um, good evening, city council members. Uh, taxpayers and mayor hike wherever you are. Um, I'm here to present an overview of the budget for the coming year. And uh, it uh does fully fund the administration's requests. And uh, I tell you, in these challenging times where businesses are in trouble and people have lost their jobs. It's uh, it's well, interesting that government, we've misnary a step. You know, uh, we're, we're still in good shape. Uh. It's almost an embarrassment of riches. Uh, we've, we're really in a good place financially. We've got. Uh, it's the best since I've been here as far as putting together a budget and having cash. Since I've started, we've had floods, tornadoes, more tornadoes, floods, and now COVID. And uh, we're still in the most financially stable position that the city's been in since I've been here. Um, we have cash in the bank, double A plus rating on our bonds. Uh, gonna do everything we can to to keep it stable and uh. Improve where we need. Improve where we need to and we'll try to put these resources to work in an efficient and effective manner. Um, but, so as this budget's gonna show, we've got enough money to spend on things. It's gonna be up to you, the leaders, to spend it on the right things. So we'll, we'll be asking, you know, you to, to look at this closely as we, uh, move on. The budget committee will be meeting within a week or two. Um, Councilman Preister, Burns and Cook. And, uh, we'll, we'll talk through it. I'll also be meeting with the, uh, department heads and fine tune this budget to make sure that everything's in there that, that they believe needs to be in there and we'll go from there. But, uh, the good news is we've, i- it looks like we've got the funds to do what the administration has asked to get done for the next year. So. Let's, uh, dive in here. Uh, no increase in the tax mill levy, it's gonna remain at sixty-one cents per hundred evaluation. Property owners, uh, your results will vary because, uh, your individual valuations may increase or decrease. Uh, preliminary valuation increased twenty-nine percent, that's due to annexations mostly. Uh, the organic valuation growth was about six percent. Uh, the recently annexed areas are the other twenty-three percent. Now, when we get the final, uh. Certified values from the assessor later this month, uh, then we'll know for sure exactly what we've, what we've got here. Um, Bellevue's property tax requirement be approximately twenty-seven million, that's an increase of six million over last year. Um, but that's also because of the higher valuations. You'll see later on if you add all the, what the C I D. C I D's took in, in, uh, in their, um, levies and their taxes. W- the total will actually go down a little bit because some of those C I D's had some higher uh, tax rates than, than what they're gonna enjoy with the city of Bellevue. Uh, of that six million that it's gonna increase, four million's gonna use to, uh, fund cost increases and new capital projects. And, uh, two million for the increased debt load that we took on when we annexed those. The spending of ninety-two million is fourteen percent more than the prior year budget prior to the amendment with the C I D's. Um, general fund spending is still at sixty-nine six, that's just right in line with what we spent on the general fund this last year. Um, but like I said, I'm gonna be working with the departments and, and it might, it might sneak up just a little bit. But again, we've got the funding to take care of that this year. Um, aggressive bonding of new projects to take advantage of low interest rates and conserve cash. I talked to the experts and, uh. They believe that, uh, conserving cash right now, when you can go out and bond short term for one percent is probably the way to go. We'll see, we, we have the flexibility as we go through the year, however the cash balance sits. I'll, uh, try to use it in the most effective manner, uh, so maybe we'll bond a little more, a little less. But, uh, um. We're, the plan is to, uh, bond a lot of, a lot of these projects that you're gonna see. And the funding, like I've said, is sufficient to continue to build a better Bellevue. Uh. Lot of numbers on a page here. This, what this is, I'm gonna go through some of these kinda quick. This is the cash at last year, the start of this current year, twenty-one million. This year, we expect to, to exit actually with a, a little better cash position, twenty-three point six million. And thi- this proposed budget will add another almost two million, so we will end the next year twenty-five point six million. Here you have each department that adds up, debt service is in good shape. Uh, that, that increased quite a bit because some of the C I D's had some, uh, cash reserves in their bond, bond fund. So we got to, uh, take those as we took the C I D on with all the, his expenditures. Um. So as you can see, most of these, for this next year, we don't have any deficits in our budget. Everything's increasing their cash, but. You know, so, so is, uh, our, our debt load. It, it, it's gonna increase and you'll see that when, uh, you see the, the, the budget on, uh, some of the pages included with the packet. We're at about eighty million, uh, after absorbing those, uh, annexed C I D debt, but we were able to refinance those at much lower rates and spread it out to make it work cash flow wise. Um. Here you got a couple of pie charts, uh. Budgeted revenue, citywide, property taxes is our biggest inflow, twenty-eight million. Sales taxes, twelve million, uh, fees and permits, sixteen. Um. We're doing pretty good. The, the occupation taxes and business taxes are a small percent and they got hit a little bit, especially the hotel and some of those. They, they, uh, went down a little bit, so I'm being a little conservative in taking them right back to their normal run rates. But then where we spend the money, um, you'll see m- most of it goes to personnel. Paying all you and some of our fine workers at the city. Uh, departmental expenses. Pens, pencils, you know, those, uh, those add up. Then the capital expenditures for the next year. Uh, we've got, uh, quite an aggressive capital, uh, expenditure list that was approved by planning commission when a week ago or so. And, uh, uh, but again, we're, we're going through that and, um. There are projects that I think, projects and capital that needs to be expended according to the department's administration, so we're gonna find ways to finance it. Then you go down to the general fund, a component of the, the prior page. And again, property taxes, twenty million, sales taxes, um, fees and permits, occupation taxes. And then where it goes, public works. That includes some road repair, you know, a lot of, of big projects that, uh, um, have been on the, the, uh. Slate for a year or two and we're gonna try to get those done. Uh, police, twenty-one percent, fire, fourteen percent, general government, uh, thirteen percent and the library takes eight percent. Okay, where do your taxes really go? Uh, you know, for a hundred and forty-three thousand nine hundred dollar home. You might pay three thousand in taxes in Bellevue. Well, the schools take fifty-eight percent. Sarpy County takes thirteen percent, N R D, Ag Society, a lot of the others have their cut. The city of Bellevue, even though I've had people come and complain about the taxes. We've, we're twenty-seven percent of it, you know? Yeah, that's, that's still real money, but it is about a quarter of the taxes that you pay come to the city of Bellevue. How do we spend it? Police, thirty-one percent. Uh, we have to pay some of those bonds for the street improvements and, and, uh, parks and, and some of the other things that we've uh, improved over the years and for some of that C I D debt. Um, fire, fourteen percent, parks and recs, six percent. All other general government about eighteen percent. And then there's cemetery, we gotta, we gotta maintain that. That's less than one percent. And then we've got planning permits, code, two percent of it. So that's kind of an idea of where do your taxes go when you, when you pay them? Yes?
Are you saying debt service is at twenty-nine percent?
Of that total for, uh, of what we're getting in taxes, that's what, where it's going. Because for debt service, taxes is, is the funding element for debt service. It's only a component of general fund.
Alright.
So the amount of the taxes is, is higher going to debt service, cause that's the only place it gets money.
That should scare people.
Yeah, there's another, uh, uh, spreadsheet with a lot of numbers. But, uh, you know, people can look at it and, and, uh, see what they want. Uh, it's, it's better to try to be fully transparent and in accounting. You know, that, that's what we do, we're numbers. You'll, you'll see down here in the bottom left, a million nine, that matches one of those first schedules and how much revenue, uh, net revenue is gonna be added to the coffers and you can go back by fund. Tell you what wastewater, that, that department is working. Uh, everything's flowing downhill so far and, and, uh, uh, it's, it's really a pretty good success story. Uh, we'll see if, if those rates have to be raised at some point. Um, economic development, we're gonna fund it again this year, seven hundred and fifty thousand. That comes from the community betterment fund, which they, uh, they got hit a little bit with the, with the COVID, uh, nineteen. Uh, some of the keynote and stuff, that did, um, reduce some of the take of which reduced our share of it. But, uh, there's still enough to go ahead and, and fund economic development and we still have cash in the bank there in case we need to draw on that for a community betterment project. This one, it's the last page. It, it just shows you, here's, here's the proposed budget and it compares it to this current year. What we budgeted, what we actually did. And it tells you what the difference is, so that if somebody says, well, how do, how's sales tax is doing? Well, we think we're gonna get twelve seven next year. Last year, we budgeted ten eight. Oh, okay, um, but during this year, including the annexations, uh, which brought us some more sales tax. And even after, um, any dip from, from the pandemic. We're still gonna increase our, uh, sales tax take for the next year. So, uh, that just seems to be holding on and, and that's one of the things that I started out with. It's kinda crazy that, uh, we're, we're still doing, but our sources of, of tax income being property taxes, everybody's paying their house taxes still and sales taxes. People were still buying things and I think the city of Bellevue is pretty lucky that it has a couple of retailers that, uh, do quite, that have done quite well.
You might wanna add that too, this is the first year that legislatively we've collected online sales tax probably in record form too. We just don't have that breakout, but.
Yeah, the online.
Yep.
Sales taxes are coming to us now too.
And Rich, doesn't that also pat the people of Bellevue that the ones that can, they're shopping in Bellevue to help keep that sales tax money within the city if they had choices to shop other places? They're trying to do their best can, their, their best to keep it within Bellevue.
Yes, I, I would say just because of, uh, those, those sales taxes shocked me because when we amended our budget. I took it down for the next few months, you know, being conservative and not knowing what would happen. It's blown the doors off of those estimates, makes me look not very smart. Bringing those down, but I'd rather not look very smart and bring the cash in than go the other way. Um, so anyway, that is, that is it. You can, you can download this presentation from the agenda or, um, I'm sure Phil will have it up on our site. And, um. Any questions? Otherwise, uh, the budget committee will be meeting, we'll, we'll set something up in the next week or two and then you will have a, uh, a hearing at the next council meeting where people can come up and hopefully they've spoken to their elected officials so that we can have something prior to that meeting. If they wanna talk, that's, that's fine, but I would rather have any changes that are good ideas in it for that meeting. So I would just encourage people to, to call you. Um, for you to let Mr. Risto know or me to, to make any of the changes that we need. And then again, the, the budget committee will review all those and we'll, uh, we'll look forward to a very prosperous year.
Thank you, Rich, I appreciate that. I'll just add one comment before I open it to questions. And that is that the budget committee was called in for a brief high level view meeting where we were looking, looking at at that time, a little earlier in COVID as a three million dollar approximate shortfall. So we had high level discussions but no real discussions or the C I P was not completed. There were still discussions going on with the department heads. So at that time, there really wasn't much to report, but I have asked the budget task force members to communicate individually with the other council members so that input goes on. But to this point, we haven't had a lot to communicate. It was one high level meeting, as I say. So after this next meeting, we will give more of that. But at this point, we have some additional numbers that are updated that we can look at. Okay, thank you. Are there questions then, Councilwoman World?
I just wanna add, congratulations to you and your department for doing a great job of staying on top of this. Monitoring everything that was happening, uh, taking advantage of, um, refinancing the bonds, doing everything you could prior to knowing that a pandemic was coming, because we hear a lot on the news of other cities that are ready to pull their hair out because they're not, they're so far upside down. So congratulations to you and your department for just, uh, being all over this and I'm agreeing with you. I'd rather you be wrong and we have money than be right and we're broke.
Yes, well, thank you, but the city has good leadership and, uh, we've got good advisors, so.
Any other questions from any other council members? And we'll have more discussion when this continues.
Yeah.
I too send my congratulations. I appreciate the advisors that you are in communication with. Uh, I appreciate you and your staff and the leadership that they provide to put the numbers together. The administration, uh, those of us on the council who have worked with finance have seen those good works. And I think we're working well together as a team and it fortunately is all coming together very well. We're pleasantly surprised.
Yep.
Good. Thank you for the good news and we need as much as I as we can get these days.
Thank you.
Okay, we will have the, as I said earlier, but I will repeat it. The budget public hearing will be at the next council meeting, August eighteenth, twenty twenty at six P M and any members of the public who may like to have additional input are certainly welcome to attend that. So thank you, Mr. Severson and staff. Then we will go to fourteen A and that's a hearing on matter, matters other than ordinances. A is authorize the mayor to sign the certificate and assurances by the chief executive of the applicant government for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, J A G program. And that's through the police department. We would need a motion, but we will first have the public hearing. So at this time, I will open the public hearing on item fourteen A. Is there any member of the public, anyone who wishes to comment or testify on this ordinance? Reso- resolution? No, it isn't ordinance. Oh, other than ordinance, is it? Anyone who wishes to testify? We are live, we're not online and I see no one coming forward to do so, so I will close the public hearing. I would ask if there is a motion. Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion, we approve fourteen A.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Stinson, second by Councilman Burns. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, then Susan, I would ask if you'd please provide us the vote. Thank you. Seeing none, then Susan, I would ask if you'd please provide us the vote. Thank you.
All voted yes.
Great, that passes. I thank the council and thank the police chief for bringing some additional assistance grants. To the city and to the staff who helped write it. Moving on then, we go to item number fifteen, Resolutions. Resolution number twenty twenty dash thirty-three to participate in the Papio N R D Hazard Mitigation Plan. From the Planning Manager and for that, we will need a motion. Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve Resolution fifteen A or Resolution number twenty twenty dash three-three.
Second.
Second, thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Burns, we have a second by Councilman Stinson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, then I'll ask you to please vote. Susan? Thank you, Susan.
All voting yes.
Motion passes, thank you all. We then move to fifteen B, Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-four. Ordering an election to authorize the Bellevue at-large city council position be eliminated. And a sixth council ward be created and added. And requesting a consolidation with other elections occurring on November third, twenty twenty. And authorize the mayor to sign it. I would entertain a motion at this time for approval. Councilman Cook?
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-four.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Cook, a second by Councilwoman Welch. Any discussion? Susan, please show us the vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Burns, sorry.
No, that's fine. What's this gonna look like exactly? Um so I mean, if we remove the, I mean, remove the at-large position, creating just a sixth coun- council member. And with all the redistricting, um and I mean, guess what is everything going to really look like?
Do you want to take it to start?
If if you recall, when we looked at redistricting after annexation, MAPPA made some recommendations. For um eliminating the at-large and creating the sixth ward. And it was probably the neatest trimmed up where a lot of your wards cover several zip codes. Um I believe Bob, you're like all over, um you're over on forty-eighth and three seventy. You're in your own neighborhood, so the realignment really kind of just squared them off and it keeps the population neat or two. The at-large, while the at-large represents the entire city, a sixth ward would just take the population and divide it amongst the six. So giving everybody probably a little more availability to their ward. So we do have that map, I can always share that with you too, but what they had proposed, it would have to be finalized, but there was a proposal how the six wards looked.
Makes sense, would we almost sort of want? I I feel like maybe I'm thinking that what is this a little backwards? In my in my mind, I don't know why, it just seems like. Like we should have more information and instead we're just gonna eliminate a position, create a position and then figure out the demographics later. And what it's gonna look like, or am I missing something?
Isn't this something to put it on the ballot for the voters to vote? Yes, they want this, no, they don't.
Yeah, so this is just the city council authorizing this to be put on the ballot in November. Uh it's it's putting it the question for the voters. Uh so the voters could say, no, we don't want it, keep it as it is. Uh but they could say, yes, let's do it, let's eliminate the at-large and add the sixth ward. If that's what the voters decide, then we would work internally with MAPPA on redistricting. We'll have the new census numbers with numbers for redistricting and then we'll begin that process. But timeline wise, you're looking at a couple of years by the time that would actually get completed. This is just the first step saying, voters, do you want this to happen or not? If that makes sense, and we have to have a resolution from the city council to put that on the ballot.
Okay, and then my next question is, is I mean, isn't there really only about a hundred days until the election? So is that really enough time for people to really sort of make an educated decision on this?
It is in the timing of it, it's pretty normal. We've been working closely with Michelle Andal with the Election Commissioner in Sarpy County. Um timing wise, it just has to be done by September first, approved by the city council and to her office. Um so timing wise, it's very normal for how this process would work.
Okay, so we'll just put it, so approve it so that it gets put onto the ballot and then we figure all the demographics out later, is what you're saying?
If if the voters approve, if the voters say, yes, let's do this, um then we would take the next steps to redistrict. Which we kind of already have a good idea from MAPPA what that would look like.
Okay, so and then how do, I guess, so how does that redistricting get determined then?
Jim, can you send the map out tomorrow? I'll send you a map, because this is just a preliminary recommendation. If you guys, I thought we looked at these when we met.
They did.
It just wasn't up on the table to say, let's let's nail this down, but it literally was the cleanest ward. I think Councilman Cook, you would take like Councilman Burns, you go all the way to the south of Offit. This would just trim that off, so you're not spread out all over the city. It really truly cleaned up the borders and then equalized the numbers. And that's the the largest problem we had when we just had the five wards, it's equalizing the numbers. So you end up having to reach into what doesn't appear logically on a map. Um so you get eleven thousand or twelve thousand or trying to keep them as parallel as possible, but I'll send that map out, that map gave us. The other thing I I will tell you that Mayor Heike met with the two candidates that are on this year's ballot for election. And also talked to them about the elimination of the at-large. Basically, in two years, once that is enacted, they would run again for an election for a specific ward. If they live in that ward, so they both were on board with the change. So that's, you know, we wanted to also appreciate that you have two two people that are finalists for uh this current election. So it didn't upset their apple cart, so we're able to advance this too. So all these things kind of played into timing wise too, is um an election that's coming up, how these wards will look, cleaning them up and et cetera. But I will, I will get that map out tomorrow, so.
And I I would just add to answer some of your questions too. It is good to raise the issue of education for a campaign and there is some limited time. But this election cycle is unlike any we've ever had and there really isn't uh opportunity to do a lot of education. Even if we had more time, but it will be helpful for us to inform the public, to help them to have a more informed vote. This has been something that's been discussed since before most of us were even on the council. And so it originally had a vote to create six members. And I think the administration left the six, but eliminated one as an at-large. I believe that for anybody, only two people, but for those who have served in it. You get hit from everybody across the city with everything. It's very unfair for their time and their driving and their own out-of-pocket financial commitment. It it is a burden even greater than any of the rest of us. So I see this as providing some fairness. After the voters make the determination, we get the specificity. MAPPA most likely will independently create redistricting that creates fair, not political. But fair boundaries in a city that's already a challenge, because we have an air force base in the middle of our city. So we have to annex around that and some other circumstances that currently make our ward districts. Look a little awkward anyway. Some of that is beyond our control, but MAPPA will help to clarify that. All of the certainties will come later, so it's intentionally somewhat general. And I would ask our legal counsel, Bree Robbins, to add to that.
I was just gonna say that the map that Mr. Risto is going to send around was just a map from December of twenty nineteen. And the last redistricting process, so it will give you a rough idea of what that would look like when we start getting the new census numbers in. And those sorts of things that could change a little bit, so that's not the final map, um so just for clarification, but it should give you a rough idea.
Councilman Cook?
One thing I think it also does, and it's a good, on the timing issue, right now we have four people running.
Right.
And the other side goes two, and now what this will do is it'll kick it to three and three. So you could possibly lose the majority of your council in one election.
Yes.
And I I don't know if you would ever want to do that, so I think this one, it puts it three and three, you know, every two years.
Right.
And I think that's that's a very big positive of doing this.
Indeed. Any other comments? Good discussion. Seeing no further comments, then Susan, you've already got up our vote. We will all vote now and send it to you.
Mr. Burns? Thank you. We have five yes votes and one no vote with Mr. Shannon voting no.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, council. The Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-four ordering the election will then be put forth to the Election Commissioner to go on the November ballot. Thank you. Moving on then to item four, oops, item sixteen, current business. Approval of a permanent sanitary sewer easement between Douglas County School District. That would be O P S zero 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 one and the city of Bellevue located in Lot One, South Woods Replat Three. And authorize the mayor to sign. I would entertain a motion. Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion, we approve sixteen A.
I'll second that.
Have a motion by Councilman Stinson, second by Councilwoman Welch. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask Susan to please give us the vote. Thank you.
All voting yes.
Thank you. That passes and is approved to do that sewer connection. Sixteen B, approve of the recording and dictation system from Dragon Software in an amount. Not to exceed eighty-four thousand, one dollar and forty-five cents and authorize the mayor to sign. I would entertain a motion. Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion, we approve sixteen B.
I'll second that.
Have a motion by Councilman Stinson, second by Councilwoman Welch. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you all very much. That is approved. Then we have item sixteen C, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Dostal's Construction Company. For the Looking Glass Height Two Park Improvement. Project to include a splash pad and restroom facility in an amount not to exceed one million fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. And fifteen cents plus ten percent contingency totaling one million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars. And fifty-five cents. I would enter, Councilman Cook would like to make a motion.
Thank you, I'll make a motion, we approve sixteen C.
Second.
Have the motion by Councilman Cook, second by Councilman Stinson. Is there any discussion? Councilman Shannon?
I'll just say generically, I cannot support spending one point one million dollars. To put sprinklers in a park for kids to run through. We have way better things. We've got drainage problems to address, we've got roads to address. We got way too many things to address. We got eighty million in unpaid debt, long-term debt in the city. I can't support spending one point one million on sprinklers in a park for kids to play.
And I would appreciate that. I did contact uh to get some additional information. I did refer to all the council members, but in addition to the the splash pad, which is larger than the existing ones. We're also getting a parking lot that that particular park has long needed, because it has no, virtually no street parking. It's landlocked, has walking trails come in and coming in from the school. So I share some of Councilman Shannon's concerns about that amount of money. It is a lot and I raised those same questions, but we're getting the parking lot, we're getting improvements to the the park and the community. And it was done with public input. The neighbors and the folks around there were informed. They came to the meetings, they gave their input on what they thought they wanted and needed. And at this point, uh I think all of the questions have been answered at least. And Councilwoman Welch, did you have something to add?
Um I'm just questioning, has this been on the, have we had this on the books for quite a while and it's now just finally getting to the point of us? I mean, this wasn't like something that was planned a year ago. This has been on the books for quite a while. Is that what I'm understanding? Dean, do you know?
Uh I'll ask. Councilman Cook, can you answer that?
I I think I think there's been discussion about it for years, about getting some water facility out to Southwest Bellevue. And I want to make a couple of quick comments. Um there's nothing out in Southwest Bellevue. This water splash pad is gonna be right behind Leonard Lawrence School. Leonard Lawrence School has seven grades, kindergarten through sixth grade, three classes in each level. Which would be about four hundred and twenty kids. You got Two Springs that has a school, you got Fairview, there's a school. Offit ripped out their pool about a year ago, year and a half ago on Twenty-Fifth Street. And if you include just north of of Ward Three, Rising View, where um. Where their pool was tore down uh because of the condition it was in, you know, there's three more public school schools there. There's LeMay, there's Peter Sarpy and Fort Crook. There's six school halls, Bellevue Public Schools out of fifteen had are very close to where this uh splash pad would be. Plus you got a couple of papillion schools a little bit further north, uh Golden Hills and Anderson Grove. They're papillion schools, but the residents, the people that attend there uh live in the city of Bellevue. It is a big splash pad, um but we have been talking about it for years and I think I think it's due. I'd love to have a full-sized pool out there, let's spend five or six million. And so I I I think the location is great, just like what Mr. Preister said. There's one street, Thirtieth Street, that would drive into this parking lot. You can walk from the school on the back of the school, plus there's three other sidewalks through the neighborhood. We created a trail out to Two Springs for kids that can walk, ride bikes down there to get to this. I think it's in a great location, I think it was very much needed. It is a lot of money, but we're putting a parking lot in there and a couple of the things that we didn't have. We didn't put in to some of the others. Um the restrooms in the splash pad are by far the most significant cost. I drive by Betts Splash Pad, Betts Road uh a few times a week and I'm amazed at how many kids are always there. So I'd like to have everybody's support on this to get it done. It's something that needed to be out there many, many years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, the Councilman Cook. Councilman Stinson?
I just want to say this was a budgeted item and it was approved in the budget. It's time that we start returning some things to the city. Uh places for kids to go, uh we we constantly say that there's nothing for the kids to do here. Here we're creating a splash pad park that's probably gonna be more active than any other place, especially during the summertime. What better place for the kids to hang around than to uh hang around a splash pad in the summertime? So I'm gonna support it, I think, e- even though it is a lot of money. I think it's well deserved and we need to start giving back to our community a little bit when we're able to like this.
Thank you. Councilman Cook, did you have something to add?
I, this afternoon, I submitted something to Shirley and to Susan and we put it up on the screen. I I just want everybody to take a look at this. Can can we get the whole thing just on? Um if you look at what I did here, and I know, I just took our our, I couldn't find a good map of the city of Bellevue. And I, if you look in Ward One and Ward Two, Ward One's farther, the blue to the right, Ward Two, these are all uh. Water facilities. Now the one up in Ward Four on the top, that when we started this process, where we were looking at trying to do something out. In Southwest Bellevue, now Ward Four Sydney Pool has been removed. I I put it on there just to show. If you look at all those uh black circles I put on there, I circled the ones that are splash pads. Uh and then I also circled, it's hard to see in Ward Three, the yellow part, because it's right where it said Ward Ward Three in the. Uh, and then I also circled, it's hard to see in Ward Three, the yellow part, because it's right where it said Ward, Ward Three in the population. I think it's, it's, just looking at this map, I think you can find a couple pockets on here that still probably need to be serviced by a water facility by the city. We got a couple pools, standard pools that are getting in bad shapes, shape, and we're gonna have to make a decision, especially on one of them up in, uh, Ward Five. But if you look at this, I, I, I think it's time to put something in southwest Bellevue, and, and I think we got the right project for it. If, if, I, I'd love to see maybe as more development gets done out in southwest Bellevue, maybe they start contributing to or help pay for a standard pool. But these splash pads get used, probably by kids up to about eleven or twelve years old. And this splash pad that we're looking at in Ward Three, abuts, is adjacent to a school that probably has four hundred and twenty kids. At every school day, they come to that school, so I don't know why not, why during the summer, a lot of them would not come to a splash pad. So, thank you.
Yeah, is there any other discussion? I would just add that sometimes we don't check the demand in an area, but this is a, a younger population. There are lots of children in the area, as Councilman Cook said, at the Leonard Lawrence School right next door. But in that complete area, there are children and there are younger children, according to some of the information that I got from our Public Works Department too. So going into the future, the, the need and the demand is likely to be the same and even increase. So it makes sense, and if, I appreciate seeing this map up, because it shows the distribution. And in the southern part, the newer parts of Bellevue, we just have not provided some service. This will give some water service in that area. If there is no other discussion, then I will call for the vote. We have the motion by Councilman Cook and the second by Councilman Stinson to approve and authorize to sign the mayor for the construction and Looking, Looking Glass Heights Two Park. Susan, if you would please, thank you.
We've got five yes votes and one no vote, with Mr. Shannon voting no.
Thank you, council, thank you, Susan, it passes and Public Works will proceed with it. The next item on the agenda is the administration's report, comments must be limited to items on the current report. And the new practice, we have a monthly report that will be given at the first council meeting of every month. And this is a new month. I don't know if any council members have any comments, any questions? Seeing none, that will be all for item seventeen. The next item is closed session, and there are none listed. So we will go to adjournment, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn, Councilman Shannon?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Shannon, second by Councilman Burns, any discussion? All in, please vote.
All voting yes.
We are adjourned, I thank everyone, please stay safe, do all of your good social distancing and personal care, and take care of each other. Thank you all.